Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Thursday, March tenth, two thousand twenty-two. Clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Counselor Kent.
Here.
Counselor Genetino.
Here.
Counselor Cuddy.
Here.
Counselor LaCastro.
Here.
Mayor Quill.
Here. Would you please join us in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, with its standing, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
If it remains standing for a moment, silent prayer will be pledged. Thank you, please be seated. Mr. Clerk, public announcements, if any?
Yes, Mayor, we do have a couple of announcements this evening. Our Office of Planning and Economic Development has announced that the next design meeting for the City of Auburn Skate Park down at Casey Park will be on Wednesday, March twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two, at six thirty P.M. And that meeting will be held in person at the Equal Rights Heritage Center, Twenty-Five South Street in Auburn. And our next nuisance abatement committee meeting will be held next week on Wednesday morning. That is Wednesday, March sixteenth, nine A.M. And that nuisance abatement committee will meet in this room, Council Chambers Memorial City Hall, Twenty-First South Street. That's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Very good, thank you. Ceremonial proclamation, first proclamation has been postponed until March twenty-fourth. Our next proclamation, Harriet Tubman's proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. Proclamation from the Office of Mayor Michael D. Quill. Whereas Harriet Tubman was born into slavery as Aramita Ross in Bucktown, near Cambridge, Maryland, in eighteen twenty-two. And whereas Harriet escaped from slavery in eighteen forty-nine to eventually settle in Philadelphia, where she was introduced to William Still, the station master of the Underground Railroad, and began her mission as one of their conductors. And whereas Harriet Tubman became known as the Moses of her people after making many trips leading several slaves to freedom in Canada along the Underground Railroad. And whereas, following her escape from slavery, she joined with the Union Army and served as a nurse, scout, cook, and spy in the Civil War. And whereas, following the war, she met Secretary William H. Seward and his wife Frances here in Auburn, through whom she contracted seven acres of land on South Street to build a home for herself and other family members. And whereas, in eighteen ninety-six, she purchased an additional twenty-five adjoining acres to her home, including a frame house that would become known as her Home for the Aged, to expand her charitable work providing for poor, sick, and elderly formerly enslaved people. And whereas, over the fifty years that she lived in Auburn, she took everything she earned and gave it back in service to others. And she fought for racial and gender equality with civil rights and suffrage activism. And whereas, on the tenth day of March nineteen thirteen, Harriet Tubman departed for eternal life and was laid to rest with full military honors at Four Health Cemetery here in Auburn, New York. And whereas, today, her home and property in Auburn are part of the Harriet Tubman National Historical Park. And whereas, in the year two thousand twenty-two, the City of Auburn is proud to be celebrating the two-hundredth anniversary of Harriet Tubman's birth with a year of events and activities. And whereas, this bicentennial presents the unique opportunity to shine a light on the famed abolitionist, Civil War spy, suffragists, and humanitarians' inspirational life and legacy in the place she chose to call home. And whereas, to kick off the Harriet Tubman Bicentennial, the City of Auburn is pleased to have welcomed Vanessa Garrison of Girltrek for their Global Walk and Celebration to honor Harriet Tubman, a celebration that took participants from all over the globe, from the Ashanti Kingdom in West Africa to Auburn, New York. And whereas, Harriet Ross Tubman is an inspiration to many people as her life's work fighting for freedom and equality makes her one of our nation's greatest historical figures. And it is therefore fitting that people everywhere pay tribute to this significant American champion of freedom. Now therefore, be it resolved that Michael D. Quill, Mayor of the City of Auburn, on behalf of the Members of Council and citizens of Auburn, hereby proclaims the tenth day of March two thousand twenty-two as Harriet Tubman Day. And be it further resolved that the year two thousand twenty-two, known as the two-hundredth anniversary of Harriet Tubman's birth, be designated as Harriet Tubman Bicentennial Year here in the City of Auburn.
Thank you. With us this evening, we have Pauline Koch Johnson, a direct descendant and one of her daughters. So, Pauline?
Aunt Harriet was a shining example of courage. Her legacy was to keep going if you want to taste freedom. She is the first woman of the United States to lead a group of soldiers into battle. And I am very proud of her. But she established a home for the aged in which she cared for others. But she endured abuse her whole life. But all the things she managed to take care of the lower, of the, of the, um, Home for the Aged was due to the Lord. She depended on Him. And she would pray before she left the North. And she would pray when she got to the South. And she would pray coming back. Without her, we would still be slaves. She was the woman who helped change the outcome of these United States. And I am very proud of her. And I thank you. I accept this proclamation in her name. Thank you.
Pauline, on a personal note, I'm glad you never got into politics. Because Mr. Lattimore and I would have to find another occupation. So, thank you for being with us. Next, I'd like to introduce Courtney Casper from the Equal Rights Heritage Center. Courtney, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having me here. And Pauline, it's a pleasure and an honor to have you here as well. So, not only is today Harriet Tubman Day, but it is also the kickoff for the year-long celebration for the Harriet Tubman Bicentennial here in Auburn. So, this morning, we actually kicked off the celebration with a couple of proclamation presentations at the Heritage Center. We're welcoming Vanessa Garrison, who is the co-founder of Girltrek, and also a cohort of visitors from Minneapolis, Minnesota, led by the founder of an organization called Run Like Harriet. And both of these groups were at the Heritage Center this morning to accept the proclamations. And then, later on that morning, Vanessa Garrison of Girltrek led a walk down to Harriet Tubman's gravesite, where a libation ceremony was held with Reverend Pastor Price of the Harriet Tubman AME Zion Church. And then also, later on that afternoon, or this afternoon, she did a live broadcast from the Equal Rights Heritage Center. And there will be a watch party later tonight at eight o'clock on Girltrek's Facebook page. And part of the celebration that Girltrek did was hosting a global walk for Harriet Tubman. And they have over a million followers. So, this evening will be the very special Harriet Tubman Day Bicentennial Memorial Service, led by Reverend Paris Price at the Harriet Tubman AME Zion Church at Ninety Franklin Street here in Auburn. It is open to a very collective group for the public, but we are really encouraging everyone to tune in via livestream. And you can actually find that on the Equal Rights Heritage Center YouTube page that will begin at seven this evening. There will be some special performances, poetry, singing, a lot of special guests, including Vanessa Garrison. On Saturday, March twelfth, that will be our official Harriet Tubman Bicentennial Birthday Ceremony at the Equal Rights Heritage Center. That's free and open to the public. It will also be livestreamed. But we will also have Vanessa Garrison again as a special speaker. We will have some special poetry readings, performances. Also, we'll be having some special birthday treats, proclamations, ceremonies. But one thing we're really excited about and encouraging the public to come see is all around the windows at the Equal Rights Heritage Center, there's hundreds of birthday cards that have been submitted from not only local Auburn and Kiowa County students, but sent in from students across the country. So, please come over and take a look at that. That program begins at eleven on Saturday. Also, as part of Harriet Tubman Week, two of our local museums, the Seward House Museum and the Kiowa Museum, will have exhibits about Harriet Tubman going on through the rest of the year. At Seward House, it is the forged in freedom, the bond of the Seward and Tubman families. And at the Kiowa Museum, it's a really nice photography exhibit that shows what Auburn was like in Harriet Tubman's time here. On Friday, March eleventh, in partnership with the National Park Service, we're hosting a live discussion with Dr. Carolyn Roberts, who is a professor of African-American Studies and Science at Yale University. And she'll be discussing with Janine Waller of the National Park Service, going over her forthcoming book, To Heal and to Harm: Medicine, Knowledge, and Power in the British Slave Trade. It's really a look at how the slave trade influenced our modern-day healthcare system. And then, on March fifteenth, to round out Harriet Tubman Week, we'll be hosting a live virtual concert with Magpies Greg Artzner and Terry Leonio, who you might know as the musicians who lead the songwriting residency at Genesee Elementary School. And one of the things that we're very excited about bringing to Auburn this year for the entire bicentennial celebration is the Wesley Walford Traveling Statue. It's currently in Philadelphia right now, but it will be coming to Auburn through the months of July and August. And it will be hosted at the Harriet Tubman Home. So, we look forward to a lot of programming happening out at the Harriet Tubman Home this summer, and also a unveiling ceremony in the beginning of July. So, one of the things that we created this year in celebration of the bicentennial was a new wayfinding exhibit called Harriet's Lantern Trail. This trail is based on specially placed QR codes that are around at about ten locations around Auburn. And what this really does is you use your cellphone. There's no downloading of anything. You scan the QR code and you get kind of transported back into time. And you learn a little bit about Auburn's history that you may have never seen before. One of the things that's included on there is a newspaper article that was discovered about Harriet Tubman speaking in what used to be the old city hall, now Auburn Police Department. So, Market Street Park is one of those stops. So, we look forward to adding on to this a little bit. And Stephanie just passed out our Harriet's Lantern Trail rap cards that kind of gives you a little detail about that. So, that was our little promo for the Harriet's Lantern Trail. That was a project that we did with TGW Studio, who is our partner through the Market New York Grant Process. So, really encouraging everyone to please go check out the Lantern Trail. If you make all ten stops, you can come to the Heritage Center and we have prizes for you. And I can attest that Judy Bryant came in last week and she has done all ten stops. And she came and got her prize. And she had nothing but good things to say about it. So, it's a Tubman descendent approved. So, we just wanted to say thank you to City and City Council for the support through the American Rescue Plan funding for the bicentennial. If any indication of what our summer is going to look like, this is from last weekend here at the Visitor Center. We had a really big crowd. And we're definitely looking forward to a productive summer. And just wanted to thank you for your support and the programming that we are looking forward to bringing this summer. And also want to thank our National Park Service partners. They will be ramping up this summer with a lot of walking tours about walking and Harriet Tubman split steps. So, we know we are guaranteed to have some great visitation. So, thank you.
Thank you, Courtney. Next, I'd like to move the public to be heard.
At this point in time, we'll open the public-to-be-heard portion of the council meeting. Residents are asked to state their name and address for the record. Please keep remarks to three minutes or less. And please observe commonly accepted rules of courtesy and decorum.
Thank you. At this time, is there anyone desiring to be heard? Mr. Lattimore, please.
Mayor, Council, it's nice to be here tonight with Pauline. And Pauline mentioned courage. And I think the ran across, Eddie Guzleak showed me a picture of raising the flag here by City Hall back when my father was the mayor. And Eddie's father was alive. He was in a forced labor camp with the Nazis. And, you know, all kinds of horrible things happened in Europe. And, you know, they showed a lot of courage. And I know, Ms. Harriet, I mean, I'm just proud to be born in Auburn, New York, with so many great leaders. And what happened at Holy Family today with raising all the supplies for the Ukrainian people, it's just amazing. And it's heartbreaking what's going on. And somebody's got to stop them. And I hope it's soon. Thank you.
Is there anyone else desiring to be heard? Very well, include the public to be heard. We'll have another one, another session at the end of our meeting. Meeting minutes. Next week. Next week, meeting minutes will be on next week's agenda. City Manager's Report. Christina Sullig.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just one item tonight. The City Wellness Committee completed their annual food drive collection on February eighteenth. City staff collected six hundred and ninety-eight canned goods that were then donated to the Auburn Salvation Army, who was very thankful to receive the donation and will use the food to fill their pantry and allow them to feed those in need here in the Auburn community. And that's it for tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Christina is sitting in with us, the City Manager. He's out of town for a few days. So, we got to better on the. Reports from Members of Council, Councillors?
Just a, I just want to let people know, if they haven't seen it on Facebook, that the Bob Brower Scientific Symposium is going to be held next Saturday, the nineteenth, at nine o'clock. It's a virtual event. So, just get that on your calendar and let them know you're interested in coming. And did she, I don't know if she left yet, but Courtney, that was amazing. Thank you so much. There's so much going on. It's exciting. Last weekend was exciting. But you didn't mention beer once. And we can have fun with and without beer. So, either way, thank you very much again for the presentation.
Outside, Counselor?
Yeah.
Anyone else? Very well. All the way down to City Manager, would you care to introduce?
Sure.
Guest, please.
Yes.
Our guest.
Yes. So, our first presentation tonight is related to our landfill solar project. So, we have here with us members from True Green Capital Management, Noah Siegel. And he's going to introduce Amy Harris, who is with Solar Farms, New York. And Noah is the city's pretty much primary contact and associate at TGC. And part of our team related to our electric power and financial industry professionals that are working alongside Abundant Solar Power, who is the main developer at the city's community solar project. So, thank you, Noah, for being here tonight.
Sounds great. Yeah, thanks for having us. And did not know that we were walking into such a special evening tonight. That was pretty incredible. I don't know how I can really follow up, follow Pauline. But we'll give an update on the solar project. So, yeah, thank you so much for having us. So, the solar, so my name's Noah Siegel. This is my colleague, Amy Harris. She's our Chief Marketing Officer for Solar Farms, New York. Tonight, we want to give an update on where we are with the construction of the solar project on the landfill. It has started. I was just over there. There's equipment. We've got a few folks on site doing as much as they can in the winter weather. But it's looking pretty good. And then, give an update on the community solar aspect and how residents and local businesses can get involved through the Energy Savings Program. And also, just answer any questions that you have. You know, make it more conversational. The project, I know, was started way back in two thousand fourteen. I'm curious, here are Members of the City Council, who was involved back then in the original birth of the project? So, that's a very, very exciting milestone. Then there was an original application in two thousand fourteen. Then in two thousand sixteen, there was an RFP with about thirty projects that were all municipality-based in central New York. And I will say congratulations to the City of Auburn because they're one of four projects that, at this point, have made it across the finish line, meaning there's a building permit and the project will be constructed. And there are some others still in development. But it just speaks to the hard work that, you know, went on over the past number of years. You know, just really want to fast-forward to today. You know, as I mentioned, we are under construction. And construction will take place throughout the spring and summer. And by late summer, early fall, we expect that anyone who signed up for the program will start to see their energy savings on their bills. And some of this may be just a refresher for folks who are already familiar with how community solar works. But we'll go over just the basics of how the program works. For folks who don't want to make an investment and put solar panels on their home, if it's not the right fit for them, if they're renting, if they're a business, et cetera, this is an option for subscribing to an energy savings program where our company is building the project. And we need someone to essentially be the off-taker of the electricity. And New York State has created this community solar program where, instead of selling it to the utility or just to the municipality, we can actually sell it to the residents at a discount from what they would otherwise get from the utility. So, it's a state-run program. And this falls into the community solar category of solar projects. So, Amy, if you want to.
Sure.
Take some of it.
So, yes, Mayor, City Council, thanks for having us. How it works? So, from the residents, you know, saying, hey, should I join this or not? We have to explain it and make it really, really simple for them. And, you know, the best thing about community solar, it is a complete win-win for all residents. They get to participate and feel good that they are using green energy and helping save the planet. And they are also saving money in their pocket. And one of the most fabulous things about the project here in Auburn is it's what we called consolidated billing. And so, not only do they enjoy those benefits, but it's also an easy user experience. They will get one bill from their utility and they will see right on there the discount. So, in other community solar programs that are behind, behind the times, if you will, they actually have to deal with two bills. And the confusion of that, you know, is, you know, it takes more education and understanding, why am I getting two bills? And the credits, that doesn't exist here. So, it's easy, it's green, and it saves in their pocket. So, basically, how does it work? You join Solar Farms, New York. The solar farm, as Noah was articulating, feeds green power into the electric grid. And you get one consolidated bill and you save ten percent. You can cancel anytime, though I don't think, you know, I can't imagine why anyone would unless they're moving, right? And even if they move and stay within Auburn, then they don't have to cancel. But you can cancel anytime, no penalties, satisfaction guaranteed. And one of the things that we promote is we also have an A-plus Better Business Bureau rating. And that also gives residents comfort when they are enrolling. The next slide. So, and this is another important point. New York State is looking to have a hundred percent renewable energy by two thousand forty. So, you know, slowly, but surely, we'll get there. Community solar will definitely help. As Noah said, you don't need panels on your rooftop. Those are expensive, right? And you can't even contemplate that if you live in multifamily. And so, everybody, whether they own a home or they rent or live in an apartment building, they can participate. I probably said all this, no upfront costs.
Yeah, I think we covered a lot. A lot of it.
I know it all, right, in my head. Yeah, well, actually, if you go back one slide. So, this is an important point, the cancel anytime with no penalty. The only obligation is that if you cancel and you already received the credits, you obviously have to pay those credits. It's like you already enjoyed that electricity and you will be obligated to pay for it, but again, at the same discount. So, it's no extra expense. But that's, you know, a communication point that we emphasize to customers. Oh, and as if it wasn't good enough, we offer all enrollees a fifty-dollar gift card upon enrollment. This project, I think, is, will allow for about seven hundred enrollees. And so, you know, we want to get the word out. We want residents to sign up. We want to build the excitement. And we'll be sending out communications. Noah, I don't know if you want to talk?
Sure. From Mayor's letter? Yeah. We've already set up a website, auburncommunitiesolar.com. And we want folks in the community to know that they're in the right place if they're going online. There's a lot of different websites out there that talk about community solar. So, we set up that website a few weeks back. It's been tested a few times, so we know it's operational. We also set up a personalized phone number for the city so that our customer care center knows when someone's calling in, all right, this is someone, this is a resident from the city that's interested in the program. And also, when folks are enrolled in the program and they start receiving these bills, if they ever have questions about where their credits are on the bill, they can always call the customer care center and someone will just walk them through the bill. It can be confusing when you first get started to see exactly where it is. It's at the end of the bill there. So, and yeah, as Amy said, the fifty-dollar gift card is something that we just do as a thank you when people sign up. You know, we're just happy to have them on the farm. And it's a great opportunity for us to be able to work directly with the city to keep the messaging very local. Technically, anyone who's in the NiSEG territory could enroll in the project. Amy mentioned it's about seven hundred spots. That it's more or less, if, that's based on the average-sized home. So, if a lot of folks who live in apartments are signing up, then that number is going to be higher than the seven hundred. But, you know, we'll see as people start to enroll. You know, I know that there are a fair amount of apartments nearby. So, you know, we might, we might see that number be a bit higher than the seven hundred.
Yeah, just want to add that, the phone number, the toll-free phone number, it's seven days a week. So, you know. So, you know, we find that sometimes residents, they're working during the week. They don't have time to make that phone call. So we are open on Saturdays, I think it's nine to two, and on Sundays, nine to one P.M.
This is just a quick shot of what the website looks like, if you haven't been on yet. And then that's just another screenshot from the website with a little bit more information. I think that brings us home. There, there are a few requirements for eligibility. You do have to be within NiSEG. If you do have an energy services company as your supplier, you can remain with them. This is, community solar is a separate program. So we do have a lot of people who are on our farms right now that also stayed with their energy services company. And then unfortunately, if you do have solar panels on your home, you, you aren't able to, to enroll in the program. And that's it. This brings us, brings us home. I'd like to open it up, see, you know, what questions council may have. Thanks for having us.
When do you expect to be online?
Late summer, early fall is what we're targeting.
Thank you.
And so, sorry, just to add to that. So we want to start enrolling residents as soon as possible. Once they enroll, they get a confirmation, they get a welcome package, they'll get their gift card. And then we will stay in touch with them so they know the progress of the project. And then right before the project is going online, we send them another communication.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's a great point with, oh, no, go, go ahead.
Oh, I, you could finish your thought.
Oh, well, ju- just with the utility, we usually submit the list of, of accounts sooner so that they know who they're allocating credits to. You know, if we're planning to be turned on by end of August, we might submit it in, in June. You know, so that the utility, we make sure that they have everything that they need ahead of time.
How, how many other communities in New York State are, are taking advantage of, of the solar farm?
Yeah, sure. I, I mean, we, we are in several counties, surrounding counties. The other projects that were part of the RFP that the city of Auburn was part of include the town of Elbridge, which we actually just sent out the communications last week. And we already have a few hundred, a couple hundred people enrolled. So it's really exciting to hear, you know, how people are really, you know, now that they see that the project is really happening and there's equipment on site, people are really excited to, to, to sign up, so.
So you'll be mailing, you'll be mailing people of Auburn the, this opportunity?
Yeah, we, we have a letter that we've drafted in collaboration with, with Christina and Jeff's office. And we're hoping to send that out after this meeting. We provided a copy. I can bring it up, but I don't know if it's the best use of time with everybody here. Yeah, so-
So you're mail and, you know, social media, so you get a whole-
Absolutely. Sure, we, we'd be happy to collaborate with social media posts and things of that nature. But certainly, the letter has been the best way to reach people. Not everyone's tech savvy. We got a call from someone today in Elbridge calling us from a landline phone. He said, I don't use a computer and I don't have a smartphone. Can I enroll? And so we can enroll him over the phone. So that's also possible if, if folks are comfortable with smartphones and such. Yeah, we're, we're excited. You know, hopefully, a hundred percent of the benefit stays here in the city. In the town of Skinny Alice, that was, that project is now operational. That was also part of the RFP. And one hundred percent of the benefit is staying within the, the town of Skinny Alice. So that was, we actually got, in, I think, within thirty-six hours, we were, we were filled up. So that was pretty incredible. Yeah, and then there's one other project under construction right now is in Cuyahoga County at the, Cuyahoga County Complex on County House Road. So that project also is on a similar timeframe. So if there are more residents in the city who enroll than this project can handle, we can start giving people credits from the Cuyahoga County project as well. And I will be floored if we can have everyone in the city of Auburn fill out both of those projects because they're, they're pretty nice sized. Yeah. Jenny, did you have a question as well?
You answered it.
Oh, I didn't.
I was going to ask you, can people do this right now? Can they sign up right now?
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, we'd like to get everyone signed up and, and submit everything as soon as possible. Yeah, that'd be great.
So for folks, I think I had this right, that live in a multiple dwelling, a, a, a housing complex, so to speak. If they pay their own utility bills now, they would be eligible. If their landlord, if it's part of their rent, it excludes them. Am I correct or not?
If, if their landlord is responsible for that and has their name on the utility bill, then the landlord could sign up and then essentially pass those savings down to his or her residents.
But if the individual wanted to opt in and the, and the owner did not, if they're paying their own utility bill, then they're eligible? It might-
Yes, if they're, as long as their name is on the account, then-
Yes.
They can, they can roll, enroll.
Okay.
And, and we submit updates to the utility every month, once we're in operation. So if someone's planning to move apartments, they can let us know. And then we can just take them off and put someone else who's interested on, on, on that month. So it's every single month, the utility is, is accepting updates. Anything else?
I believe we're set.
Alright. Alright, thank you very much for having us.
Thank you, Noah. Thank you, Amy.
That'll help me on the city's website.
Not tonight?
Might be too.
Next, we have Mr. Seth Jensen, Director of Municipal Utilities in regards to water rate.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of council. Two really exciting presentations followed by a water rate presentation.
I didn't know you could read minds.
I am so sorry. I am so sorry. So we'll get right into this. I'm here tonight to, to give an update on our current water rate and potential options as to what we need to consider into the future with a new water rate. So what, I just wanted to start with a little background for the public who is listening in. You guys have all heard this multiple times before. But what the, what does our water rate actually support? And what, when we pay our water bill, specifically the water side, not the sewer, what does that money go towards? So, you know, we, we, the people of Auburn, we own a water filtration plant. That water filtration plant is staffed by nine full-time employees. There's three remote facilities. We have our upper pump station, lower pump station, main treatment plant, and then a off-site reservoir. We treat approximately one point five billion gallons of water each year and supply close to forty-three thousand Cuyahoga County residents. And that includes every city of Auburn resident and business. We also have a full-staffed water maintenance department responsible for approximately a hundred miles of water mains. And they're charged with delivery of that treated water to eighty-eight hundred service connections within the city of Auburn. Probably our most visible department or the department that most our residents deal with and customers deal with is our water billing department. There's two full-time employees in that department. And they basically provide service to every single resident who's having an issue, changing residents, selling homes. It's a very busy, busy department. You know, I wanted to mention a couple of other, a bit more abstract, but really, over the last five years, we've almost doubled our contribution to watershed inspection in the Water, Wasco Lake Watershed Management Council. We account for the vast majority of the funding that supports three full-time professional staff members, not only tackling, you know, the daily watershed inspection duties, but also collaborating with multiple different agencies, nonprofits throughout Cuyahoga County and the state of New York with respect to our water quality in Wasco Lake's watershed. And last but not least, the water, the general fund also relies significantly, not necess- we rely significantly on the support of the general fund from central services, city manager's office, Christina Selvick, the engineering department, helping with, you know, new designs. Our comptroller's office, who reviews the water rate presentation before such as and presents it to city council, helps out with our budget each year. These services are reimbursed by the water fund annually by way of a transfer. So, when I first started in this capacity as municipal utility director, we already had a water rate analysis underway. Really, we're looking at every rate. We're looking at our sewer rates, our town wholesale sewer rates, wholesale water rates in, in city sewer and water rates. And we had hired Raftellus. Raftellus is a, probably the premier water rate firm in the country. They do the vast majority. And I've seen multiple presentations, looking at other communities and what they're doing with water rates. And nine times out of ten, there's a gentleman or lady from, professional from Raftellus delivering that presentation. So we, we had a good firm and we also needed some, some expertise from, from GHD, who kind of had a good relationship with the towns and the villages from working on some consolidation projects in the past. So it was at that time that city council adopted a water rate that changed our, our retail rate from two oh five to two sixty-two per hundred cubic feet. And when we set that rate in 2016, the thought was a five-year rate. We're going to set it, we're going to forget it. Year one and two, we're going to make a little bit of money. Year three, we're going to kind of break even. And year four and five, we're going to, we're going to lose a little bit of money. So that, if you spread it across the five years, we break even. And that's, I think, one of the things that I've been kind of thinking about in my mind, because you talk with businesses about what we do. And we're really in the business to break even. We don't make money in this business. We work our best, we do the best we can to, to, to break even every year. So just thought that was kind of, kind of an interesting perspective. Not too many people think of it that way, I don't think. But anyways, so 2021, in the middle of COVID, a lot of craziness going on. Not a lot of FaceTime that we're able to do. So we had worked, we, we, we generally developed this water rate presentation to give to city council this past spring. We knew that it was time because that model worked properly. But we didn't, we didn't get to it. There was a lot going on with COVID, trying to get all of our budgets together. So we had to utilize three hundred and three thousand, thousand dollars from our fund balance, which was healthy because we grew it to be healthy in order to balance the budget this year. Next year, we'll have to do even more fund balance. And I'll, I'll show you in subsequent slides to be able to balance our budget. So with that all said, we've spent the last year or so kind of critiquing this presentation. So how's the rate developed quickly? You know, we trend to forecast bill flow. We look at past bill flow. We look at what the market's doing. Are we billing more? Are we billing less? Are we billing stag, you know, steady? And generally, we've been fairly steady across the last few years. Actually, COVID was a bit of anomaly, everybody at home. We actually billed more water in, in one year. So we actually, we took that number, we pulled it out because I don't think that it's necessarily accurate. And we looked at the three previous years building up to that. And then we said, okay, that's, that's generally how much flow that we sell each year. We looked at the minimum bill and tried to incorporate that into the model. We're billing a minimum of seven units to the minimum customers. Then we forecast our O and M, and this has been a tough one. And it probably will continue to be a tough one. All the conferences that I've been attending this past week and some of the coordination meetings I've had with other utilities, it's just completely unknown. So we typically would hold our inflation around one and a half percent, two percent in general. We increased it a little bit for a couple of years and then we kind of normalized in year three as trying to project what those costs are going to be. We look at our existing debt and then we looked at new debt from the CIP that Ms. Selvick helps coordinate each year. And we make sure that all of those debt service tables are in as expenses. And then we start to look at revenue and, and see what happens. So with no rate increase, the, the picture doesn't look very good. You know, we can get another year or so with no rate increases, but we will rapidly approach zero. And the longer we go without an increase to correct that factor, the harder it will be to get back up to a healthy fund balance. When I first started in 2016, we were around just under a million dollars in our savings account. And we grew it to two with that idea of having two million dollars in case something catastrophic happens. We can grab cash, we can pay for it, we can get things back up and running. When you're spending, you know, six million dollars a, a year, five to six million dollars a year, it's nice to have two million dollars in your savings account. And we're between one and two. And that's generally what the comptroller has guided, guided me in. So here's one scenario, which is similar to what we did in 2016, which is kind of a potentially set it, forget it, one-time rate increase. And this would take our retail rate to three thirty-five, a hundred cubic feet. And you can still see, even though the savings account comes back up and approaches two million dollars over time, we'll still need to do a significant request for fund balance this year in order to start building that up. The other thing that this does not change is our service fee. So it's just purely the rate. When you get water, when you get your water bill, depending on the size of your service, you'll get a service charge for the size of your meter service for water, a service charge for sewer, and then the rate times however many units of water you've used against the water rate and the sewer rate. So this is one idea, set it and forget it again. Another one is to kind of take that top-end number of three thirty-five per hundred cubic feet and do it incrementally. And, and do half, half this year, half next year. As you can see, the result of that, it does stabilize, but not as quickly as the one, one-time rate set. We still wind up with just around a million dollars in the savings account. And it helps lessen the blow a little bit of a one-time change. Another idea, and this came after conversations with some local businesses. We sat down with Nucor. They are by, by far our largest water customer. And in 2016, I made a mistake. I was new. We were setting rates as all these numbers getting thrown around. And I'm just like, holy cow, here we go, we're doing this. And then Nucor came and sat down with us about a week after we had set that rate. And they were like, oh my gosh, I can't believe you guys never talked to us. And I looked at how much we billed them and I said, oh my God, I can't believe we never talked to you either, you know? So that was one thing that Jeff and I talked about early on when we were doing this was to reengage with, with, at least them, they are a significant customer in Auburn. So this takes some of their input in, into mind and some of their recommendations into mind. Again, it doesn't get us to two million, it doesn't hold us at a million. It's kind of that, in the middle of the, the road. Sets the quarterly bill, our retail customers, like me, you guys. The majority of Auburnians get billed quarterly. But then there's businesses and there's monthly customers who use more water, use more sewer. We bill them monthly. As a way to potentially lessen that, the blow of the one-time set-in- As a way to potentially lessen that, the blow of the one-time set and forget it, incorporate that monthly charge over to two-year cycle. So, I'm sorry, that, that rate increase over two years instead of just over the one, set and forget it. So, this contemplates kind of a bit of a split. Our monthlies in year one, we get half of the increase at 299 per hundred cubic feet. And the, the normal resident would just get that one, one time. So, what does this mean to me? What does this mean to you? For our normal customers, and when I say normal, I mean residential customers. There are a lot of people living, one person in the household, they're not using a lot of water. We have a lot of minimum users within the city of Auburn. And they're typically the folks who are on a fixed income. They're not, they're not using a lot of water. They're retired. So, what happens to our minimum customer? You can see that circled in green, they're about, they would be seven units or less. They're currently paying around $68 a quarter. They would go to 72 for about a $20 a year increase to what they're paying today. And this is the full, full retail 335 rate. The average customer, like myself, family of four, doing laundry every night, every other night, dishwasher every night, 12 units, a quarter, you're gonna see a $35 increase per year. Eight or nine dollars a quarter. So, I don't know where you guys stand in all of this. If you're interested, I can talk about that. But obviously, the more you use, the more, more dramatic that increase will, will be. So, how do we compare? This is kind of interesting. We did this the last time around. We, we redid this in comparison to kind of the three most comparable communities around us that offer the same services we do. Geneva's, we go in Watertown. Auburn's in blue. And you can see that even after we were to do a retail increase to 330 or so, we're, we're still very competitive. We're, we're still the cheapest around. Until you start to creep up, you can see us, we go in Auburn, kind of normalize or get very close at the, the larger, at the 40 units. But for the normal customer, we're, we're very inexpensive. The other thing, the state comptroller's office put out a document. City manager got his hands on it. He sent it to me. It's very hard to read here, but the national average, it says for comparable water rates, monthly bill on the national average is $38.67. After a new water rate increase, we're $21, $22 a month. The state average, and this is water, is $50. We're $51.43 for water and sewer, and sewer per month. So, we're providing very good quality water sewer services for a very good price. So, my recommendation is maybe to take that blended approach. I think financially would be the best to just go for the set it and forget it again. But after listening to some of our larger customers kind of growing into that, so it's not a huge hit, you know, just to put it into perspective, for Nucor, this year with a rate increase, they're gonna, they'll see a $58,000 increase in their, their bill in a year. If we were to do it one time, it's 120,000. So, that's a, that's a real conversation. That's a, that's a conversation worth having because that's a lot of money. So, that's where them requesting that we do it over the kind of a phased approach and being fair with all of our monthly customers who, who use traditionally a little bit more water than our residents in that stepped approach, I'd, I'd recommend it. So, that's my presentation. Any questions?
Seth, you, you mentioned the steel mill, large consumer of water. Does that all go through our sewer system too, or is a lot of that lost in production or whatever?
So, that's the hard part with, with Nucor specifically is 95% of their bill is water. All of their water goes to evaporation. So, we have a huge service that provides water into their cooling towers and their, their operations. And then our, then we have a separate water and a sewer service that goes to just their normal, you know-
Basic domestic use.
Bathrooms, yeah. So, their sewer bill and water bill on that service are no bigger than, you know, any normal business.
I guess what I'm, what I'm trying to ask is, for production, they use a considerable amount of water. Is a lot of that recovered? Is it, is it lost to the atmosphere?
I think the majority of that's lost to the atmosphere. Yeah. Yeah, it goes towards cooling. But, you know, we, we've worked really closely with them over the last few years as well. And we've provided major infrastructure improvements on York Street, North Street, Chase Street to ensure that we're providing them with the highest quality and quantity, basic quantity of water that we can possibly give them. And they, they haven't had a shutdown because of us since that project has gone into play. Before, if we ever had a main break on our state street feed, when we have to shut that feed off to repair it, the, the feed on North Street wasn't big enough to supply them with enough water. They'd go, they'd start to cavitate and they'd go into a shutdown, which if you want to start adding up numbers, is probably double what, you know, one shutdown, unanticipated shutdown is hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Seth, I always, last question comes with, I've always been told that a hospital is a large consumer of water. How, where do they rank?
They're, they're not, they are large, but again, they're, they're taking in water and then using the sewer as well. So, they're not as directly impacted because a lot of that rate increase gets drowned out with the sewer rate as well. We bill them monthly. They would, they would go up next year or once this resolution to, is passed, or if it is passed, they'd go up to about $8,800 a year more than what they're paying now. At the full rate, it'd be about $15,000 more a year. So, I say they're not, but that, that's a lot of money, you know? That's a lot of money.
Mr. Jensen, how many, I guess, how many people are taking advantage of the metering? Where the online metering, because, because that is something that we offer as a city to, to monitor their own water usage. Is that? Do you know how many people are taking advantage of that?
I'd have to get back to you on that. We, we sign, we're incrementally signing people up. I wish there was a, a way that we could almost force that because I'll tell you, one reason is it's, it becomes a great communication tool for us with the public. We don't have a great communication tool with them right now. Everything is snail mail, and that's very expensive. When you sign on to the customer portal, you have internet, you have cellphone, everything, all these annual water quality reports, you know, they could all just get blasted out. Lead service, lead service lines or shutdowns. You could, you could bundle people into groups where if Mr. Gayback was working on a water main break, he could draw a circle with his finger on the map, hit send and send out emergency notifications to those people, but we just don't have their contacts yet. So.
I mean, it's, it's a resource that I think if more people took advantage or if we tried to really push to have people signed up, we already offer it.
We do.
It's like, it's built into our, you know, our service. If we could really push people, especially now, I think it would be a, a real benefit for the, the consumer and the, the city. So, but yeah, I, I just, I think that would also help people be mindful of, of usage.
Right, yeah.
I mean, we, we recently, we got an email or a phone call about some, some water billing. And it's like, oh, boy, I wonder if they had, you know, if they knew that they have, though they could, could see their, their usage on a minute-by-minute, real-time basis. So.
Right. And that's certainly, anytime we're working through that process with a customer, we're letting them know that that program's available and exists. Whether they actually sign up or not, a lot of landlords have because it's a good way for them to understand what's going on in their homes as far as people just turning the spigots on and walking away or-
Yeah, absolutely.
Great, thank you. Would the surrounding towns be affected at all?
Yes. So, we have water agreements in place with some of the surrounding towns. And the retail rate is what their rate's built off from. And depending on their, their agreement, they're either 15% more than retail. You can see here, Town of Troop and Senate, 15% more than retail. Town of Aurelius and Kewee County Water and Sewer Authority are 5% more than retail. So, that's, that's a really good question, and I forgot to mention that on this bring it home slide.
I mean, not to get critical of the surrounding towns. I mean, we're in business to sell water and make money, aren't we?
No.
We're in business to sell water and break even.
Correct.
Okay. Then why don't we sell water and break even?
Why do we sell water?
Why don't we sell water to break even? Why should the residents of Auburn who are in the business of selling water, why don't we sell it to break even for the residents of Auburn?
That's what we're doing.
With an increase to Auburn?
And to the towns. There just goes up incrementally with our retail rate. They're 15% more than our rate, our agreements. So, right now, they're paying 15% more than $2.62, $3 per CCF. When we increase the rate, their rate goes up incrementally with ours. At that, so their rate goes up. But it's actually one of the cleanest ways to arrive at a, at a wholesale rate to, to our customers outside. It's just a very simple 5 or 15% increase to the retail rate. It's not, it's not less. In the sewer, with the sewer, it's actually, it's less. But there's a lot of different factors that go into, into that. With water, you can actually do return on investment. So, that, you know, I guess to a certain extent, that's, you are making some money. With sewer, you cannot do return on investment. So, that's where the 5 and 15% come into play.
Seth, thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Actually, Council of Castro's point is a good segue into what I wanted to talk about first. You, you mentioned 2016, the rate study, coming up with the methodology. Talk a little bit about what the billing process, the rate process was like specifically for the towns prior to 2016. There were 20-year agreements in place with, with some of the towns.
Yeah, and there, well, and there still are. So, it's difficult in, in this forum when we're talking about water because those agreements never changed. The water agreements are still the same as they were then. We spent the majority of our time focused on the sewer agreements. And in the town of Aurelius, they were under some sort of a court order where they were paying next to nothing per hundred cubic feet of sewer services. Their water services, that was different. Their water rate, they've all, towns have always paid in accordance with their, their agreements. On the sewer side, they were not always paying in accordance with their agreements. In fact, they were paying less than other towns were paying with their agreements.
Right. And in a lot of ways, the consumers in Auburn were subsidizing those, those lower rates.
Yeah, on the sewer side, absolutely.
But I guess my point is, we've worked very hard to make what, make it not only equitable, but I guess in what you're saying, it's in our favor and, and a little bit, right?
On the water side.
On the water side. So, we have worked to come up with a, with a methodology that works that isn't just, we're not just picking numbers out of a hat. We can show on paper why we're charging what we're charging so that we can break even, but, you know, maintain the infrastructure, improve the infrastructures that's, that's delivering these services.
Right.
That wasn't always the case. So, it, it is, it's a valid concern, but I think it's something that we've really paid close attention to. And we should continue to, for sure. You mentioned Nucor, them being the largest consumer of water. You know, the water rate doesn't simply just pay for water. We, we take advantage of the fact that we turn on our spigot and water comes out. It's the infrastructure that delivers that water. And, you know, one of the things that we are always working on is economic development, attracting new businesses, keeping existing businesses. And, you know, this allowed us as a municipality to address serious concerns that one of our largest employers had with their water service because there were times when there was disruption in the water service. And it is to the tune of tens to hundreds, thousands of dollars every time that happens. And this was, this was an economic development investment through, through water rates. Many of our major employers in the city of Auburn, three of whom are plastics manufacturers, rely on water. So, I, I think that that point just needs to be highlighted, that this is an economic development tool and it's important. You, you showed a graph with the rates for surrounding municipalities. I know back in 2016, when we discussed the methodology, what the increase was going to be, we used that. There was also a printout that went out. And it showed like, you know, 12 units of water equals how many bottles of water that you buy in a gas station, you know? And I always tell the story, the last time this happened, I was at work and somebody made a comment to me, oh, you're raising the water rates as they're buying a bottle of water using their credit card out of a vending machine for a dollar 50. And it's, how much water does that dollar 50 get you out of, out of the tab? I just think that's, that's an important graphic if we could revive that-
Yeah, absolutely.
-as we continue this conversation. And I think it's a good way to communicate to people exactly what they're getting.
Absolutely.
So, I'm gonna be Captain Obvious, maybe? But, so, to do the blended, the gradual increase, obviously, that's a difference of 36 cents, first year and the second year of increase. So, that, that's money that we otherwise would be getting if we just went all in and, you know, let it go. But I think that really shows the, the responsibility we feel to the businesses and, you know, the, the families that have to pay this and understand that doing it all at once, taking a hit like that, is gonna be major. So, I really appreciate that you thought that through and recommended that because I think that's the right thing to do.
Thank you.
And one more question. You, you mentioned the minimum units. The minimum units is set at seven?
Yes.
You, you are not proposing that that change?
No, no. I mean, that, that's something we could look, look at. And the hard part with that, and I, I did look at it, was if you set the minimum at six, you're actually, you're going backwards for some of those. They're gonna pay less than they're paying now.
And if I remember correctly, the last time we did this, or shortly thereafter, due to constituent feedback, we did rate, or we did lower the minimum units.
Yeah, the minimum in 2015 was 10.
Yeah, and we lowered it to seven as part of that, that last rate increase.
Yeah, because that was like the, the closest blend. This rate increase is not as significant as, as the rate increase that we experienced in 2016. One of the biggest things that we changed in 2016 was we add, we increased or we added a sewer and a water- a sewer and a water service fee. And we could have looked at increasing that, but it's nice to keep it the same in water and sewer. And I was just focused on water, because our sewer were fairly strong at the moment there with our current rate. But our rate consultant really highly recommended that that be as much as it possibly can be. But when we did that, that took our minimum customers and really added a lot, because they were paying a two-dollar meter fee. And then it went to like a twenty-four-dollar fee. But that's kind of set revenue that you can rely on, like a delivery charge that you see from NISEC, it's a delivery charge.
And that's a good segue to the last comment I wanted to make. You know, we're talking about a rate increase, nobody wants anything to go up, including us. We're going to pay it too. You know, but the reality is, we're having a very public conversation, we're explaining the methodology behind it, we're showing that we're breaking even, breaking even while we're investing in the infrastructure of the city. We're providing a service, a utility. NISEC provides a utility, Verizon provides a utility, Spectrum provides a utility. They don't have this conversation. They simply send you a bill in the mail with the increase, and there's no discussion. I think it's important that we're doing this, I'm glad we're doing this, because we can justify what we're doing. I know that you're not happy about being up there.
I don't like doing this.
I know you don't. And, but it's, it's a necessary part of your job and...
Yeah, of course.
And I appreciate you explaining it in the, in the way that you're explaining it, so that we can explain it to the people of Auburn.
Right. As you were talking, I'm sorry, you know, just quick, some of the things that the last rate supported was the lagoon rehab at the water filtration plant. We put in HAB system, and we're continuing to pay a lot more on chemical for that each year. We built a storage and maintenance garage at the water filtration plant. We've done some significant electrical upgrades and an arc flash study for employee protection. We've, we've done major improvements at the Logan Street, the Logan Street Maintenance Garage, sorry, multiple vehicles, including partial of a Vactor, Skidsteer, some dump trucks, the North Street Water Main, North Division Street Water Main, Chase Street Water Main, Auburn Ave Water Main, Parker Street Water Main, Dunning Ave Water Main, Swift Street, Paulsifer Drive Water Maines, hundreds of lead service line replacements, zebra muscle control system replacement, hundreds of valves and hydrant citywide, hundreds of water main repairs by, by our own crews. Formation of the Owasco Lake Watership Management Council, basically doubling our contribution to, towards high-quality personnel in that division. The Owasco Flats land acquisition, and I kind of circled back to the HABs treatment facilities, but just the operation and the chemicals associated with that. So that's what we've done in five years with the last rate, plus, that's the highlight reel.
You were prepared.
Well, I just started typing.
Yeah, I know.
And I was like, oh my God, look at what all, and this, these are the staff that I outlined at the, these are, these are the people that are making it happen.
Oh, yeah. It's, a lot has, we know, and again, as Counselor Genetino said, it's just important for the public to know how much it takes to get a glass of water from their tab. I mean, it's just immense amount. So, and thank you to you for making sure it's done right. Appreciate it.
Mr. Jensen, I started coming to city council meetings, nineteen ninety-five, when I was more than cheap. And the conversations were basically the same as they are tonight, but we're going in the right direction. It hurts, you go to dinner tonight, you're going to pay more than you did three years ago. You're going to fill your car up tonight. It was probably three dollars cheaper than it was this morning, or more expensive than it was this morning, but it's a quality life issue, in my mind. And I don't like spending money anymore than anyone else. But when I need water, I want water, I want the best water available. We have to bite the bullet different times.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Counselor Genetino, you made a good point. You go anywhere, everybody's walking around with a bottle of water. We have the, we have the best water in the state, but if they had a beer or something, you know, I could, I could be swayed on that, but just go.
No, no water, no beer.
That's right.
Absolutely, absolutely.
There's our slogan.
He's a professional engineer, ladies and gentlemen. That's the AWWA, like, coined phrase, the American Water Works Association. They have these, you know, technical conferences, and then afterwards, they have these no water, no beer conventions for you. Have a little fun.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselors, any business, more business? City manager, where was for executive session?
Nothing on our end, Mayor.
Second public to be heard, almost forgot that. Anyone desire to be heard? I'm talking about water and sewer for, we're good right now. Entertained a motion for adjournment. Counselor, Senator Mike Counselor Genetino, I approve.
Motion to adjourn six sixteen, Counselor Kent.
Yes.
Counselor Genetino.
Aye.
Counselor Puddy.
Yes.
Counselor Castro.
Yes.
Aye, adjourned.
Jimmy, I think you have the, the water bottle cost.
Yep.
So I hear the strike point answer?